Okay, on behalf of the City Council, we would like to welcome everyone to our first meeting of 2020, and thank you all for coming out. Okay, council, we have a roll call. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present, and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Counsel Grego?
If there's no changes, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda's presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, let's please start voting. Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the part of the agenda to where we ask people who have any citizen comments to fill out a comment card, turn it into our city clerk, and then you're allowed to come up to the podium and speak for three minutes. We do ask that you keep your conversations within the three minutes. There's a clock right there. If you are still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end and have a seat, okay? Also, if you're here about the parking situation and the parking item that's on the agenda, we will be having an open hearing later on in the meeting, so we'll have plenty of time for people to talk about that. This probably is not the time to talk about the parking part, okay? Alrighty. So, right now, I have three comment cards. Do we have any others right now? Nope? Okay, thank you. The first one is Jan Owen.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Jan Owen. I live at 924 Eighth Street in Alamosa.
Helen Sigmund, 16 Cottonwood Place.
We are members of the Planning Committee for the Alamosa Women's March, which happens this next Saturday. I have postcards for each of you. We'd like to talk a little bit about the Women's March. This is the fourth year that we have participated in it. We start at Adam State and do about a mile-long walk, and then end at Carson Auditorium, where there will be a one-hour program. It is the 100th anniversary of the women vote, passing of the 19th Amendment, and thus we have our little sashes in memory of that or in honor of that. The purple stands for loyalty, white for dignity, and gold for hope. So, you'll be hearing more about that on Saturday. Our program is very diverse. We have speakers talking about healthcare, immigration issues, and equity. We'd also like to thank the Alamosa Police Department. They are providing some assistance for the walkers, and the campus patrol also will be assisting. Anything else?
Please join us. They'll also be singing and music, so we're gonna be marching first and then a program.
Oh, and I will just mention that in Alamosa, because we are a small community, we have really tried hard to make it a nonpartisan, family-friendly event, so I really do encourage you all to attend. Thank you.
Men that support women included.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel always like to recognize elected officials who are in our meetings, and we would like to thank you, Commissioner Sigmund, for coming out here tonight. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Troy Bernberg.
Good evening. Thank you for accommodating me. I'm the city's public finance partner. I last saw you all in October without the facial hair, so I look a little different this time around. But I was up in center, doing some volunteer work, and called Judy and thought I could stop by and share the good news as the result of the city's lease purchase refinancing. Just wanted to share some comments on how well that went. The city's refinancing was $6,280,000, and we were able to generate orders over, well over, $8 million. So, we had really good demand for the city's COPs or bonds. That's in part due to your great credit rating, which is A, and a stable outlook, so that's excellent news. I think what I'm really proud of, and it was at the request of city staff at the very beginning of our meetings in July, was that they wanted to be a reach-out to local banks. And so, I'm very proud of the effort that my team made to reach out to all six institutions that we were given names of. I'm afraid that sometimes my colleagues were a little too persistent, but we wanted to make sure that they didn't miss out on this opportunity, and I'm really pleased to say that over a third of the transaction went to local banks. So, that's really, really cool. That's something that we really try to specialize at Northland, and I'm glad it really worked out for the benefit of the city. And then, of course, you know, the savings, the interest rate savings, that's really the brass tacks of the matter, and we were able to not only meet but exceed the $800,000 that was kind of a goal of all of ours. You know, of course, I couldn't promise you that in October, but market conditions worked out. It turned out going and selling in December was a really good idea, because there was a lot of investor money, and so we ended at just south of $830,000 of interest rate savings. So, that's real money that can be deployed elsewhere and otherwise, and thanks again for the opportunity to present. I know this is unusual, but I kinda like the idea of keeping your investment banker to three minutes or less. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Troy. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Ruthie Brown.
Wow, there's so many people here. I usually don't always say this, but Ruthie Brown, I live at 711 State Avenue, and I sleep in the county. And thanks for putting me last, Ty, because with all this money you're gonna save, I'm here to talk about snow and ice removal, and it's pitiful. And right now, I'm working a lot with a family in our community, a young man who wheels his mother everywhere in a wheelchair. I don't know how many miles they put on, but, you know, giving, and I sent in a list to the city, I think just this week, and they jumped on it as far as taking out brochures and stuff, but wow, it's been two and a half weeks since it snowed, and it's a 24-hour timeframe to have snow and ice removed. And so, what's going on? Why do we have these ordinances if we're not gonna enforce them? And not just for my friends Leo and Maria and other people I know on crutches or wheel, it's for all of us. And as you drive downtown right now, look at all the little gutter pans, and I've been talking about this for 20 damn years, and it hasn't been figured out. And I know you have to get the snow off the streets also, but when I pay to have someone plow the front of my store, as I've done for 20 years, and to plow now in front of Society Hall to keep our customers and clients and concert-goers safe, to have the city come back and plow their snow back onto my clean pavement, it's really hard. And so, we're out there chipping ice again, and it's two inches thick, and 15 bags of ice melt later. There's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be a better way to get the snow and ice out of Main Street on the north side of those buildings. It's ugly, it's not conducive to shopping, it's not conducive to economic development. So, maybe part of that $800,000 could be well-spent to get this figured out. I don't think that's asking too much for people to feel safe all the time, all the time in Alamosa, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I will turn it back over to staff for any follow-up.
No, we have no follow-up.
Okay. All right. Up next on the agenda, we have ceremonial items. We have a recognition of Certified Municipal Clerk, CMC designation for LaChelle. Holly, is that gonna be you? Okay.
So, I'm gonna come over here and talk.
Okay.
So, you see me? LaChelle. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, it was with great honor that I am able to present the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk to Deputy Clerk LaChelle Montano. The designation of CMC is given through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the IAMC, and is only granted to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community, and state. IAMC was founded in 1947 and has 14,000 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. The CMC program has been assisting clerks to excel since 1970 and is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities. To earn this designation, a municipal clerk must attend extensive education programs while also requiring pertinent experience in a municipality. Because of these requirements during this designation, it is only given after an individual has been an active member of IAMC for two years and obtaining 60 points in the education category and 50 points in the experience category. However, because of these requirements, a municipal clerk can only obtain this designation in the least amount of three years. So, it takes three years to even get close to this. LaChelle began working for the City of Alamosa in August of 2015 and has worked towards earning this designation by attending various trainings and obtaining experience through her position here at the city. In order for her to earn the education points, it did require her attending education trainings, which included a three-year institute program offered through CMCA, which is the Colorado Association of Municipal Clerks. Their program offers 120 hours of coursework in public administration, managerial skills, interpersonal skills, and technically-related subjects over the course of three annual one-week sessions. So, they start on Sunday, and they don't end until Friday. So, it's pretty intense, and they had to do it for three years. Since 2015, LaChelle has also earned these points necessary to obtain this designation by attending annual conferences through CMCA, attending numerous professional development classes, and serving on CMC committees, including the awards committee and the scholarship committee. She has done all this while also learning the requirements of her job duties for municipal court. So, municipal court has nothing to do with the CMC, so it's a very big deal. So, tonight, it is my honor and privilege to present LaChelle with the CMC. It's great having her on my team. She's been a great addition. She's always willing to learn and expand her experience and knowledge for the betterment of herself, our department, and the city. So, without further ado, if you would please help me in extending warm congratulations to LaChelle for earning this great achievement. And if I could have her husband come up here, I would. IAMC gives a plaque and a lapel pin, which you get to wear once you're in this designation, so I'd like him to pin it on her.
Oh, that's good.
And this must be a really big deal for both Holly and LaChelle to be up in front of this big of a group and go through this. So, I just wanna point that out.
LaChelle, did you wanna say anything?
On the spot now. I prepared mine. No, I'm just grateful to the city to give us this opportunity to continue to grow and continue to learn. I don't know, I just appreciate it. Sorry.
Okay. Counsel is gonna say a few, have a few comments for you, okay?
What was that?
Counsel Grego, and then Counselor Daniel.
And I'm gonna present her with her plaque real quick.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead. Thank you, Holly. That was very professional.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna congratulate you, LaChelle, because when you go to the city clerk's office and you meet this young lady, the customer service, not just to us, but everybody, the way you approach people, it's tremendous. And for you to continue your education at the rate you did, and I want to congratulate Holly for letting her staff continue their education. It only makes that department stronger, as everybody knows what a city clerk really does, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. LaChelle, congratulations. I know that was hard work. You have worked hard for the last three years to get that done. So, thank you for really making our city better, and thank you for all the work you do and the energy you bring every day, in addition to the municipal court stuff, which is a whole, like, different job. So, thank you for taking the time to do that and really bringing your whole self to work every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hensley?
So, LaChelle, same thing echoing what my counterparts here have said to you. We're blessed to have you. We're blessed to actually have all three of you that are in that department, and obviously, everybody came here to congratulate you and to support you, and it takes the support of the others also, so that you're able to focus on that. And so, I think with that, we have a great team, but definitely congratulations for all your hard work. It's well-deserved what you've done and your accomplishment.
Thank you.
Counsel Brawls?
Just wanna say congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You know, I appreciate your initiative to do this, and it'll benefit the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I, too, would like to thank you as well, and I encourage you to continue to pursue your education. It looks like you have a great support system right there and a family who's proud of you, and I can assure you that everyone up here today and staff as a whole, we're very proud of your success, and we wish you the best.
Next up is the master, so.
All right, you got this. All right, good deal, good deal. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you up here after you finish the masters.
Few more years, but.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Can I go sit down?
Okay. I know we have a large group of people who are here tonight in regards to the proclamation that we're going to present today in regards to the youth vaping, which is a public health crisis. I talked with, I believe, it's Carrie, right, a little bit earlier? If you'd like to come up to the podium? So, Carrie, if you would like to tell us a little bit about your group there, and if anyone would like to say a few words, they're more than welcome to, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Harris, and I'm a public health nurse with Alamosa County. With me today are four amazing students.
I'm Shanoa Candy.
Jamie Turner.
I'm Kayden Spohm.
Reese Caneen.
And we all thank you for taking time in your busy schedule to talk with us tonight about this crisis that's affecting our community, our state, and our nation, and to consider our proclamation. Colorado has some of the highest vaping rates in the nation. 2017 Healthy Kids Colorado data estimates that 49.2% of high school students in the San Luis Valley compared to 44.2% of high school students in the state report vaping. Youth who vape, we know, are four times more likely after just one year to begin smoking traditional cigarettes. We are not alone in this fight. On December 20th, President Donald Trump signed a package into law that raises the federal legal age to purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21. It is currently a violation of federal law to sell tobacco products to anyone under the age of 18. However, policy on how this is gonna be implemented and enforced is not expected for six to nine months and possibly up to a year. One method of enforcement that's proven effective at both the county and the city level is tobacco retail licensing. I know that the new laws are confusing to even those of us that work with it every day, so the packets that you were handed out have information about the new laws and about tobacco retail licensing that you can look at at your convenience. As a public health nurse, I am frequently asked, Carrie, is vaping really happening in our community? Is it really happening that often? I'm here to say yes, but I also have our four amazing students here to share their experiences and tell you about what they've noticed around their parks, at their schools, and how and why are youth are vaping. Who wants to start? Someone wanna talk about why are youth vaping or at the parks?
So, you could just walk around town, or at the park or the high school, you can go around, and you'll randomly just see, like, pods all over the ground.
Where's the park where you've seen a lot? Where are the parks where you've seen a lot?
Cool Park is where we see a lot of the pods around. Even though some of the parks say that it's like smoke-free or tobacco-free park, you'll still see, like, people smoking or vaping over there. Also, once I saw, like, a younger kid that didn't look like 18 or older, and they were just smoking, I was just like, ooh.
Reese, do you wanna talk about what's it been about vaping?
Kids have, well, they vape because they don't know what's, they think cigarettes are less harmful than actual cigarettes, so they don't really know what they're putting into their bodies. And the pods have, like, flavors in them, like chocolate and mint and stuff, so they wanna try them for, like, the flavored stuff.
So, I'm from the high school, and so, I see it really frequently there. Sometimes you go to the bathroom, and there's just kids skipping class vaping in there. You go to wash your hands, there's the little pods left from them in the sink, and I guess it's just really hard, because they're really convenient for kids. They'll pass them around in class, teachers can't always be looking at them, so teacher will turn around to the board, and they can just vape. And so, I guess I'm really touched by this, because to me, vaping is as dangerous as, like, texting and driving. It can kill you, it may take a little bit longer, but I'm a senior this year, and a lot of kids in my class vape, and I don't wanna see one of my classmates that I've had with me since kindergarten die from vaping right before we get to graduate. And so, I just think it's a really big issue with the youth right now.
Okay. Well, thank you all so very much. We're gonna have any council members who would like to make any comments, say a few words, but I would like to encourage you all for, it takes a lot of courage to come up here and say things like that and to bring awareness to issues that are affecting the community, so I encourage you to continue to be a voice for the youth in our community. Did any other council members have any other comments? Counselor? Okay, good, thank you. So, what we're about to do now, our council work together as a team when it comes to reading proclamations, and tonight, the proclamation will be read by Mayor Protem Yan Vihil, and then, after he reads the proclamation, we'll all come down, and he'll present the proclamation to you, and we'll take a group picture, okay? All right, good deal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
And to echo what the mayor said, thank you all for being here tonight. Takes a lot of courage to speak up and bring light to this issue, because it is a problem. Declaring youth vaping a public health crisis, whereas the Colorado Public Health Act of 2008 requires the Alamosa Public Health Department Board of Health to develop and promote policies necessary to secure the conditions necessary for a healthy community. And whereas tobacco use remains the leading cause of preventable death in the United States and Colorado, contributing to the death of over 480,000 people each year, including 5,100 Coloradans. Youth who vape are four times more likely to start using traditional cigarettes after just one year compared to those youth who do not vape. And whereas electronic smoking device use or vaping among youth is increasing at an alarming rate, in 2017, an estimated 49.2% of high school students in the San Luis Valley compared to the state average of 44.2% reported having ever used an electronic smoking device. And whereas the vaping industry aggressively markets their products using the same tactics that have been proven to increase youth smoking. E-liquid flavors like Cotton Candy, Banana Split, Gummy Bears, and other appeal to kids, and the vaping industry uses these flavors and other advertising tactics to draw youth in. And whereas vaping has recently been associated with an outbreak of a newly-recognized acute-onset lung disorder, which can cause severe disease, high rates of hospitalization, and even death. And whereas tobacco, nicotine-free environment, and policies have been demonstrated to encourage smokers to quit, discourage youth from starting smoking, and alter the perception of adolescents as to the social acceptability of tobacco-nicotine use. And whereas, in order to address the public health crisis of vaping among adolescents and to protect the health of all young people in Alamosa, the City Council hereby recommends the following actions to key community stakeholders. Number one, local governments, consider policies ensuring comprehensive tobacco-nicotine-free environments, including outdoor spaces such as parks and playgrounds. Consider regulations, including licensing of tobacco retailers, and restricting tobacco industry advertising and promotions at the point of sale. Two, retailers, keep all tobacco-nicotine products behind the counter, requiring clerk assistants to purchase. Check identification of all customers purchasing tobacco or nicotine products. Train all clerks in responsible tobacco or nicotine sales practices, and establish a corporate culture of not selling to minors and following all applicable laws. Now, therefore, the Mayor of Alamosa, of Colorado, Ty Coleman, and the City Council do hereby proclaim youth vaping as a public health crisis, and encourage all those to do what they can to ensure a healthy community for our youth.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, counsel. Up next, we have Consent Calendar A. Counsel Vihil?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have uh board business. Who's gonna handle that? Is that going to be uh Ms. Holling? The Main Street Advisory Committee appointments. Okay?
Okay. So this is your appointment for the Main Street Advisory Committee tonight. So some background information, city council passed resolution number twenty-two, twenty nineteen on December fourth, creating the Main Street Advisory Committee. The committee was created for the purpose of identifying enhancements to the central business district to create a more vibrant and welcoming downtown. The committee will be composed of eight representatives, including the following. Two representing the hospitality industry, which is hotels and restaurants. Two representing the retail industry. Two representing property owners. One at-large member, which is a four-year term, and one council member. Two ex-officio members shall also serve on the committee, which includes the Chamber of Commerce Director and the Marketing District Director. A total of eleven applications were received with, for council conducting interviews for these applicants on Wednesday, January eighth and on Wednesday, January fifteenth. For each category, staff recommends that council appoint one person for four years and the second person for two years in order to have staggered terms. Council will appoint board members by way of a vote. According to council policy, appointments shall be by ballot and shall only be effective when appointed by a majority of council present at a meeting. When appointing for two vacancies with three or more candidates, each counselor shall vote for two candidates and the two candidates receiving the most votes, and at least from a majority of council shall be appointed. Council shall proceed to another round of voting of the top three candidates of the initial ballot count. Does not give a definitive top two candidates each with a majority of council approval the first round. Once all ballots have been counted, council will affirm those votes by a voice motion ratifying the selection done by ballot. Um, the applicants and the respective areas that they applied for are Chris Lopez, who applied for it to be an at-large member, Don Thompson for at-large, Kyle Woodward for the hospitality industry, Joyce Wiley for retail industry or property owner, Scott Graber for hospitality industry or property owner, Louis Gallegos for retail industry, Frances Aginberg for property owner, Sandra Ortega for at-large member, Matt Abbey for retail industry, Carol Modrigan for retail industry or property owner, and Mary Domito for retail industry. And you interviewed all of those except for Mary, but she did advise me that you all knew her, so if you guys want to keep her on the ballots, I did list her. Um, if you want to take her off, let me know. And you can just cross her off.
Uh, council has agreed to keep her on the ballot.
Okay, perfect. So we can, I'll start with, yeah, I think we just give them, um, the at-large member for you to vote on? And then on these ballots, if you want to, so on the at-large, you're gonna vote for two, right? No, actually, you're only voting for one at, on at-large. The next one, I'll tell you. And that's a four-year term. Should I count them now or when they're all done?
You want to just pass it now in this way, that way we'll make it easier.
Okay, and then this one is going to be for retail industry. You'll vote for two positions and um write the number one for the person who you want to be a four-year term, the number two for the person for a two-year term. Okay, and then this will be the same thing. This one is for the property owners.
There you go.
Do you need a one and two on this too?
Yes.
Yes, so one and two on this one. Okay, and your last one is for hospitality industry. You'll do the same thing, a one and a two.
So in this one, we have to put four and two also?
Yes. That's retail.
Oh, this is the retail one.
Okay, so did, we do a property one?
Uh, yes, okay, it's these ones.
Is it the property one? Is it the property one either? Okay, so I'll take the other one to go through. Okay, hold on now.
Just look. So these are good. Okay. I think he has, oh, he has it. Yeah. Okay. Well, you leave them right there, so it's okay.
I, I wanted to make sure I filled that out. Do we have one more?
Oh, they got them all. So I'll count all these if you want. I don't know, oh, it's the parking thing. I don't know if you want to.
Staff, if um while you're reviewing those ballots, if for some reason you notice that one of us did not complete uh the ballot correctly, if you don't mind, would you just bring it back to us so we'll make sure that, because um that way we'll make sure everyone's vote count, okay?
Will do.
Thank you.
So Mayor, um, given that we have some dead time right now, I wouldn't recommend we do the parking one because I don't know if that will be done in this timeframe, but we may have a few that are a little quicker that we could move up on the agenda.
Sure. Um, while they're tallying the votes, we'll go ahead and move forward on the agenda and we'll move to um item.
Maybe one B, the annexation.
The first reading of ordinance number one dash twenty twenty. Anyone's talking on that? Is that you, Heather?
Um, I believe Harry will be coming up.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight we're presenting the first reading of ordinance one dash twenty twenty. It's the annexation of the McLean Fink Lot sixty-six and sixty-seven. Uh, this property is part of the enclave located on the southwest corner of Ross Avenue and Seventeenth Street. Uh, city water and sewer utilities are provided next to the, to the lots. The lot is also served uh by pavement. Uh, this property has been found to be eligible for annexation, meeting all the state requirements. We have received a signed annexation agreement from the applicant to, to, to complete that process. Uh, staff recommendation would be to accept ordinance one dash twenty twenty approving the annexation of McLean Fink sixty-six and sixty-seven on the first reading and set it for a public hearing on Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty at seven P. M. or soon thereafter.
Okay, thank you. I see I got two mics on it. I didn't see which one came on first, so I'll take either one of you. Michael, Council Carson, or Council V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to uh move that we accept ordinance number one dash twenty twenty approving the annexation of the McLean Fink Lot sixty-six and sixty-seven on first reading and set up for a public hearing on Wednesday, February fifth at, at seven P. M. or soon thereafter.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, how are we doing over there?
We need one, maybe one more item. Um, so if we want to do two A, Mayor, if you want to open them.
Okay, sure. Let's go ahead and um, we have uh item two A under finance, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, this is the second reading for the pay plan ordinances. If you remember when we uh read, had the first reading in December, um mostly it was to do some housekeeping and we added the golf course employees to that pay plan. Um, and that, those are the only things that we changed from the original pay plan and um for twenty twenty. So, does anyone have any questions?
Council Hensley?
Sorry.
Oh, no worries.
No questions.
Okay, Council V. Hill?
Mayor, no questions. I move that we approve or, oh, public hearing, sorry, sorry.
So, all right, so what we're gonna do at this time, you can tell this uh twenty twenty, we're a little rusty. Okay, right now what we're gonna do is we're gonna open up the public hearing for the uh second reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty nineteen. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to uh make any comments in regards to this, please feel free to come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, seeing that we have no one in the audience coming up to the podium, we would now close this public hearing and then bring it back to council. Council V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty nineteen on second reading.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holling?
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. Do we have time for another one?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then let's just do two B.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, agenda is item uh number two B, the first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty twenty. That twenty twenty is getting to me. Twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor.
Eric?
Uh, this ordinance is uh occasioned by the recent voter approval of the city's half-cent sales tax and um the city codifies its sales tax amounts in the code of ordinances. Uh, and so the purpose of this ordinance is to incorporate that voter-approved uh ten-year half-cent sales tax into the city's code of ordinances uh in the section concerning sales taxes. And in drafting this ordinance, um it became clear upon review of that section that it sorely needed some other updating as well because some of the prior uh approved sales taxes had not been incorporated into that ordinance, uh thereby leading to some confusion. So the, this, the purpose of this ordinance is uh in four parts. It's first to include that new half-cent sales tax. Secondly, to include the uh two thousand and five voter-approved extension of the half-cent sales tax for the water treatment plant. Um, third, to clarify how the um sales tax is applied. And when I say that, I don't, i- if you go into the, the code or the materials currently, there's a very arcane, convoluted way that the tax is described. It's like the, a half, a, a, I could quote it, but a penny on the first eighteen cents and then a half, half a penny on the balance, and it just didn't make any sense with modern uh point-of-sale systems, and it's much simpler just to call it a half-cent sales tax. And they round appropriately, um, when you're at a point where that half cent wouldn't, you couldn't pay a half cent because it, it has to round. Um, and then there was just a typo, a stray use tax provision in there. So this cleans that up as well as incorporating the new half-cent sales tax.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Counselor Greego?
Well, this, this is a first reading, so I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we pass ordinance number two twenty twenty on first reading and set it for a public hearing at, on February the fifth at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Not, please start voting. Ms. Holling?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. You all are moving right along. Do we have time for another one?
I think so. I think they're getting it figured out.
All right. Okay.
Did you want to read it or you want?
Um, we'll go ahead and go to uh City Manager Legal, item number three A.
Actually, I'm ready if you're, ready to go back.
Okay, so she's ready. All right, well, we're ready.
Okay. Okay, so after counting your votes, um, so for the at-large member, you guys have voted in Chris Lopez, and he will serve a four-year term. For the retail industry, um, Matt Abbey and Mary Domito are going to be your representatives for the retail industry. Matt Abbey will serve the four-year term and Mary will serve the two-year term. Your property owners are Frances Aginberg and Carol Modrigan. Frances will serve the four-year term and Carol will serve the two-year term. And then for your hospitality industry, you have voted in Kyle Woodward and Scott Graber. Um, Scott will serve the four-year term and Kyle will be the two-year term.
Okay, thank you.
And then if you can make a motion, just approving that.
Okay, and um, well, so what we're gonna do is um, we gotta first make a motion to, we're gonna, we're gonna, we want to just make a few comments real quick, if, if that's okay, before we put all this into um motion. I think Counselor Hensley wanted to make a comment about all of the applicants who applied.
Okay, that, I'll make that comment. I have another comment too. So anyway, I do want to thank all the applicants that have applied. Um, we really appreciate the support. Um, it means a lot to our community when people um step up um and are willing to give up some of their valuable time. And um so for those that did not get elected, it wasn't that we don't appreciate and we hope that everybody who is not on this committee will definitely, um, we have plenty of committees to join and hopefully they will throw their name in um other committees because we do really appreciate everybody who is interested in helping out our city. And then the other thing I was just gonna add is I didn't see it on here, but do we also, and I didn't know if it's a separate uh sort, uh separate sort of, uh, separate area, but that we also do need to do the H-PAC applicant.
It was in consent calendar?
It was in the consent, thank you.
And, and, and earlier council, um, also agreed that, uh, Councilor Grego would be, um, the city council member, uh, on this committee.
So if you can just include that as part of the motion, so those that Holly listed and to appoint, um, Councilor Grego, that would be great.
And if council's okay with that, I'll make that motion. But real quick, just wanna, uh, echo Ms. Hensley's words about, uh, everybody's input and we appreciate all the applicants as well as, um, the mayor and I talked last week during the interviews during some downtime of just how exciting it is to hear everybody's energy and how we all want to make downtown a special place and how we're all bought into it. So I think the ball's starting to roll and we're just gonna give that ball to this committee and you guys take it from there. So, uh, with that, I move that we, uh, approve the council votes uh, in cre- uh, in creating the downtown, uh, committee as well as, uh, appointing Charlie Grego as the council rep on there.
Thank you, Councilor V Hill.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Great job, council. Uh, good job, everybody. Alrighty, okay. Brings us up to the item that we've overpassed several times here. I think this is, we're gonna go to, uh, item, uh, one A, a public hearing and, uh, motion of authorizing the creation of the parking permit system on Sierra Avenue. Heather, at this time, I'll turn this over to you to give us a little history on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, so this item for myself personally, um, goes back to about twenty seventeen. So it goes back a few years when trustee Wright approached me and indicated that a resident, Ms. Tanaka, had contacted him, um, concerned about the parking issues that she was experiencing. My recommendation to, to trustee Wright was to take it very seriously, um, because a lot of times if it's something that, that the city needs to get involved in, the standard result is usually a parking permit type of system. And so my encouragement to trustee Wright was to really take it seriously and see if there is something that ASU could, could do to, to mitigate kind of what was going on in that neighborhood. I honestly didn't think about it much after that. Um, it was probably, I would say, maybe five months, six months later that Ms. Tanaka contacted Councilor V Hill. And at that time, her frustration had grown. She had felt like she'd been kinda passed around, not taken very seriously and that no one was listening to them, which was really disappointing. And so what we started officially at that point in time from a city perspective is outreach to the neighborhood in order to learn more about what the issues were, how long it's been going on, those types of things. Um, we held multiple neighborhood meetings. We talked about pros and cons if they wanted to look at a permit system. We sent out letters to Monterey, um, Sierra, El Camino, uh, Del Sol, as well as a, a few other blocks in that area 'cause we knew, um, that was the general area that was facing these, these situations. And on, there was a lot of people that showed up and not all of them wanted anything done. Um, and this wasn't something we wanted to push on to the neighborhood. It was something where as staff, we were hearing complaints and concerns and, and we wanted to learn more and find out what the neighborhood wanted as, as a solution. There's definitely pros and cons from a residential perspective to the permit system. Um, they, they would be limited to five permits. So in that situation, if they're having a party, they either need to work with their neighbors and get some extra permits or they could come in to finance. So there's a little bit more effort that has to go into something like that. Um, we wanted to make sure they knew it wasn't dedicated parking. So it doesn't mean that they automatically are gonna get the spot in front of their house, um, but it meant that someone needed to have a parking permit type of situation. It also meant that they needed to be on top of it because we were gonna enforce it. If this was in place and if it was going to work the way it needed to, that required us to enforce it, which means they can't forget to hang their permit or else we were gonna be contacting them and, and those types of things. And so they needed to be vigilant in making sure they were following what the program was. These meetings were really well attended. Um, we also had representation from ASU at those meetings as well. For me, the major takeaway from those meetings is that this has been going on for a very long time, which was hard to hear from a city perspective, feeling a responsibility towards our residents that it had been going on long enough and just that sense of nobody listening to them was, was extremely disappointing. At this point, residents were extremely frustrated. Um, they felt no one had taken them seriously. And again, it wasn't just a matter of not being able to park in front of their home, but the parking was so bad that they would have to park several blocks away. So it's not as if they just had to park a few sp- spots down the, down the block. There is a lot of examples of blocked driveways, erratic driving, trash, even some retaliation when the residents would call police in what they were facing. Um, an example of broken sprinklers when, um, people are driving up onto the curb and, and onto the grass. At this point, um, Ms. Tanaka's not here and honestly, I, I think she may have given up on the process and rents her house out now. But the last time we went through this, she submitted a letter for council consideration that I feel does a very good job of explaining what they were facing and, and the frustration and gives some very good examples. So I'm gonna read that, um, right now. "I would like to give a history of my experience since two thousand and five when I purchased the house. Up until the time Adam State expanded their campus, there had been no issues regarding parking or major disturbances from students. However, after Adam State expanded the campus and the city changed the traffic pattern on the street, Adam State had indicated they would implement a parking committee for the neighborhood, which never manifested. Because my house is a corner lot, I no longer had space in front or side of my house for guests, plumbers, or other service folks to park due to students or employees of Adams parking for days or even week at a time. During this time, I have had my house aged, beer bottles, fishing hooks, trash thrown in my yard, students being aggressive and threatening when asking them to move their cars when my driveways were blocked and being late for work and having to call numerous times for a car to be ticketed or towed. In the past, after reporting students, a renting neighbor had his car keyed and moved out of the neighborhood because of the parking issues. I've had to reach out to Adam State every semester to ask for reminders to be sent to students and employees regarding parking, which Ken Marquez of Adams has always been supportive, but limited inability to have any major impact and change. After years of frustration and asking again for change, I reached out to the Board of Trustees and was passed on to the city. I therefore reached out to Councilmember V Hill earlier this year and he took action and had City Manager Ms. Brooks and Chief Oaks contact me. I'd like to say how much I appreciate Mr. V Hill, Ms. Brooks, and Chief Oaks for their effort and attention to my concerns as well as the neighborhood since it has finally culminated in my hope for an affirmative resolution." So I felt, given the history of this and the role that Ms. Tanaka played, it was important to, to read that letter. So following the, the outreach, what we did is we emailed every single property owner a letter and at the bottom it had an opportunity for them to vote technically on if they wanted it. And if council will remember, not all of those properties voted yes. Um, some were no, some didn't respond, those types of things. And so, um, when council took a look at it, and at this point I'm gonna switch over to the map. From a okay, from a voting perspective, it was only that area shaded in blue that had enough green that felt like it was something that overwhelmingly those residents wanted. Cause again, it was never something that the city was trying to push. This was driven by the residents. So when we did this outreach, we were very straightforward in that if, if there's only one area that's getting it, what will most likely happen is those parking behaviors will shift. And the shifting will continue until the distance between where people can park for free and without a permit is the same distance to some of the other parking that's underutilized right now, um, on campus. And until that distance starts to balance itself, it's, it's normal parking behavior. And I wanna be clear, i- it's not like the employees at ASU or the students are intentionally trying to make life difficult for these residents and, and no one's really the bad guy in any of this. But to be able to talk about this reality that the residents have been facing is, is what's important. And so what we indicated is if that does happen, the residents on any of these future blocks could always do a petition in order to bring this back before council in order to expand it. It doesn't guarantee that council is going to do it. Um, it just means that that's the option if they wanna look at expanding it in the future. When we were doing the public outreach, there were some different ideas during the meetings that were thrown out, some of which we researched and, and, and either incorporated or some that just were not gonna work. And one of those was this concept of just doing it from an eight to five where people could park and those types of things. Not only were the neighbors not in favor of that because that apparently is when the worst problems are, um, and they see most of the damage and the issues during those timeframes. But from a police perspective, we would never have even recommended a program because that would have only increased the workload on police. And so we get a lot of pressure on our police department in regards to enforcing ordinances and fighting crime and, and all of that type of thing. And that would have been stretching them further than where they were already be- been stretched. So Chief Oaks was, was adamantly against it. I've talked to Chief Kennison and, and if he needs to answer any of those questions, he can as well. But he would be adamantly, um, against that as well from a, from a impact on our, our staffing. Um, the other thing is during this time, we did make some compromises. ASU has, um, a family, the Scavizi family, that lives in one of the dorms. Clearly that's a different situation than just students. This is a family that lives there year-round and goes to the grocery store and does everything just like a resident would be doing. So, um, ASU, um, Mr. Marquez worked to get two dedicated parking spots that would be somewhat nearby and we gave two permits. So they didn't get five, but they did get two to recognize, um, that it is a little bit of a different situation. Additionally, um, ASU reached out in regards to trying to think outside the box on move-in day. And so what we did in partnership there is while there's, on a regular basis, no parking allowed on the west side because of how narrow the street is. It, it can't allow for parking on both sides. What we did do is on move-in day, allow for temporary either fifteen-minute, twenty-minute. They police it with their campus police. So that way students could park, unload, and then move the vehicle and, and someone else could go in. And so, um, we did get that worked out. I think the major point that I wanna make in all of this is that this was a last resort. Listening to the residents of how many years they've been dealing with this, with not being taken seriously either by ASU or the city and feeling this frustration, they just want it fixed. And they didn't care if it was ASU fixing it through some type of thing or if it was the city fixing it through this tool. They just wanted it fixed. And so really, this was a tool of last resort in order to come to a solution for these residents. When we talk about, could there have been other opportunities, I think this map is great because it does show that ASU does have parking. It's not as if they've just built buildings and, and haven't planned for parking. And so there is parking, um, throughout their campus. I don't know their parking studies. If someone were to ask me is, if there's enough or not. And it's not ASU's fault that people are doing normal human behavior. They're gonna park where it's closest and where it's free. And, and so I wanna make sure that, that we're very clear with that. I don't know if, you know, if they still charge for employees to have to pay for a permit and changing that, if that could change some of the behavior. I don't know if changing where public and employees and maybe, um, paving more parking or students could be other solutions. I don't work for ASU and I don't know the criteria that they would use to evaluate those types of things. What I do know is that we had residents, without anything else being done, who were facing some significant issues. So the questions we've received, um, since we've implemented this is could we do parking on both sides of Monterey Avenue? I kinda already addressed that. It's too narrow. Um, people have indicated, well, you've got narrow streets in other places. My response is too bad, don't make a right. Um, we get issues. We get side swipes on those streets. People, you'll drive down those streets and they're parked on the sidewalks because they're trying to get out of the drivelanes. So making the situation worse is not a good solution. We've gotten a lot of questions as far as the time parking. Again, the chief is here. Um, if you'd like to ask him about the concerns he'd have on our staff. The other issue is, um, when you have expectations and you, and you raise those expectations and don't meet them, then there can be a lot of frustration. And so if we cannot enforce it or say partner of ASU to enforce it at the level that people expect it and it will be a high expectation, there will be a lot of irritated individuals. Um, so I wanna make sure that, that we understand that as well. I've received questions on, don't we have other developments in town that have to provide parking and why would ASU be any different? My response to that, cause it's a legitimate question, ASU has provided parking. I have no idea if it meets our parking code. There would be a legal question on if as a state agency, they have to even meet our codes. But the bigger issue is it's not as if they're developing a new project. They're already developed, um, and the parking's there. And so, um, trying, we have no way of trying to get more parking from a city perspective. And then I've gotten questions on, do we have this anywhere else in town? My response has been, if we had issues like this, we would be treating it the same way with the neighborhood outreach, bringing the process before council, all of that kinda stuff. But frankly, nothing like this has been brought to my attention anywhere else in town. With this coming up, we have reached out to the residents that live there. We, they are very happy with the program. They feel like they have their property back. Um, it's, it's interesting. I've asked them about the timing issue and, and they definitely would not be in support of that. And, um, you know, every once in a while I hear, well, sometimes I still can't park in front of my house and I get, get to be the bad guy and remind them that was never the promise. But at least you can park on that block now, which is a big improvement. And then from a police perspective, they've seen obviously a dramatic, dramatic decrease in the number of calls that they're getting and, and the nuisances that we're seeing in those blocks. The residents have also indicated that the traffic is much better as well, which is something we didn't even anticipate. So it was interesting to reach out and, and to learn that. So that, Mayor, if you wanna open the public hearing?
Okay. Um, at this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing. Um, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium, state your name and, uh, voice your comments.
I never know to wear my glasses or not. I'm at that age, sorry. Kinda feel awkward because I wanna thank you for the appointment to the Main Street Advisory Council, so thank you. Anyway, my name is Chris Lopez with Adam State University and I'm joined by my colleagues Ken Marquez, Vice President of Student Affairs, and Larry Mortensen, Athletic Director at Adam State. My personal areas of responsibility at Adam State include community relations, alumni relations, events management, Adam State marketing and promotions and communications. Esteemed council members and City Manager Brooks, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Our aim tonight is to provide council and the city administration with additional information on neighborhood parking around the campus and Adam State's ongoing strategy to, to grow both its student body and the number of events Adam State hosts as we work to position the university strategically for the years and decades ahead. Adam State, as you know, turns one hundred years in two thousand and twenty-one and we look forward to celebrating the re- the rich and deep history between Adam State, the city and county of Alamosa, the residents of Alamosa, known as the city of champions, and the citizens and the residents of Alamosa, known as the City of Champions, and the citizens and communities across the great San Luis Valley. We have a lot to celebrate and a lot to look forward to as we collectively and collaboratively move Alamosa and Adam State forward. I'm also a native of Alamosa and a such a lifelong visitor to Adam State. So my own reflection on the campus and how it fits into the larger picture of the community is very personal. The city, we believe, has a significant vested interest in seeing Adam State thrive. Adam State's impact, both on the quality of life and economically, I don't think can be disputed. Just think about the sales tax that was adopted for street improvements. The Adam State community, which includes our students, our faculty and staff, the tens and thousands of visitors who come to Alamosa to visit Adam State and attend events at Adam State, are and will continue to be major contributors to the revenue collected by the sales tax. As such, we believe the city's efforts to restrict parking around the campus is short-sighted when we look at the bigger picture of how Adam State fits into Alamosa, the economy of Alamosa, and the strategic vision for Alamosa. Adam State opposes the proposed expansion of residential-only parking along Sierra Street. In addition, the university requests the city council review and consideration to either rescind or modify the existing restricted parking along Monterey. Adam State believes the restricted parking inhibits its ability to conduct business, and that by selectively determining where in the city of Alamosa, based on citizen petition, that restricted parking occurs, we believe the policy is unfair to Adam State and its business interests as a public university and as a community asset. When this topic of restricted parking on Monterey Avenue was before council in 2019, Adam State respectfully declined to issue public comment out of respect for our longstanding working relationship with the residents of the neighborhood and with the city of Alamosa. We have monitored the impacts of the Monterey restrictions. We don't think it's a surprise to anyone in the neighborhood that adjacent streets to Monterey would likely be impacted by the Monterey parking restrictions. But we don't believe the corrective action is to expand restricted parking around the neighborhoods and request the city not to approve the Sierra proposal, but rather to put a pause and bring us all together to continue to work on parking solutions, not just for Adam State, but for the community that includes visitors to campus as well as residents in the neighborhood. There certainly are other neighborhoods in Alamosa that have a mixture of residential and business interests, and we wonder then why only the Adam State neighborhood that is having this discussion. We understand and respect the active and responsive citizens who reside around the campus of Adam State who have brought this issue forward. But is it really fair to Adam State and the role it plays in driving as a driving force for the local economy? If the city determines that restricted residential-only parking is a valid strategy, then we believe the policy should be citywide in all neighborhoods and not simply the residential neighborhoods around Adam State and the north side of campus. Events hosted by Adam State alone will have the effect of impacting street parking around Adam State, and particularly the north end of campus where our Student Union Building, McDaniel Hall, and the athletic wing of the campus are located. Our goals these past two years has been to grow the number of events hosted by Adam State, hosted on the campus, and we have and are doing that. Vista's Restaurant alone above Rex Field has seen more activity in 2019 than any year before that it opened. The annual trunk and treat held at McDaniel Parking Lot on First Street is growing in size each year. Larry will speak to major high school tournaments and events hosted by Adam State and the fact that our parking lots get maxed out from those types of events. Adam State on a whole will host nearly 200 events on campus this year, and these are not Adam State events. These are events by groups who reach out to Adam State looking for space and accommodations. And we want to accommodate them because we want Adam State to be a convener for groups. So Alamosa and the community benefit, and Adam State benefits. Just in 2019, we have seen such an amazing list of businesses, organizations who have come onto campus. The 12th Judicial District, Center for Rural Schools, Center for Restorative Programs, Center for Creative Leadership, Cherry Creek Schools, Colorado Army National Guard, Colorado Department of Human Resources, the Colorado Rural Association, Colorado Connections, Colorado Trust, Colorado Association of School Boards, Colorado Department of Education, Colorado Municipal League, Colorado Society of CPAs, Community Resource Center, Costia County, CSU Area Extension, Daniels Fund, Del Norte School District, Denver Public Health, Genova Jehovah Witness Convention, K-12 Virtual Schools, Ortega Middle School, Pan American Day, San Luis Valley AHEC, San Luis Valley BOCES, San Luis Valley Behavioral Health, San Luis Valley Water Conservancy, Tucasa, San Luis Valley Tourism, Rocky Mountain Prevention, TSJC, Volleyball Health System, Excel Energy. All of these groups have hosted events on campus. And with each of these groups, we send them a parking map, the best parking lot to be in for their event and what the parking options are, including not to park along Monterey where parking is restricted. Our commuter students, we know, also impact street parking. Commuter students that come from Alamosa and across the valley to attend classes. Ken will speak more to those issues, as well as provide information on what Adam State has done to address parking issues and the partnerships we've created to address more parking. Ken?
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you all, Mayor Coleman, City Manager Brooks. Summary of the parking issues are very accurate. We had long conversations about this. As the letter that Ms. Tanaka sent, her and I worked very closely together. She did call me an awful lot of times. But what I wanted to do is just take, well, before I get started with just a few bullet points that I want to point out or note, I did want to thank you all for your proclamation today on the vaping. Adam State joins you, and we became a vape-free campus this year and making sure that our students are not vaping on campus. I just wanted to say thank you for your, we continue to to work with you all in in that initiative to help youth stop that that problem, but thank you for that. So what I want, I'm glad that this map is up. It makes, it will make a lot more sense as I point out some of the things that I wanted to stress. So in 2009 and 10, we did do-
Ken, did you want a, did you want a pointer? I've got a, do you want a pointer?
In 2009 and 10, we did do some major renovations. And if those of you have been around for years, remember Stadium Drive went right through the middle of campus.
This one is.
Larry's going to be the pointer. He's already in trouble. What do I do? Just press the button? So, so those of you might remember how Stadium Drive kind of went through the, you know, the city and curved back around and and so on. When we did that, we used to have a really big parking lot right in the middle that housed, that had about 180 spaces, which has now become, if I can point this out right, this little tiny space right here. It used to be a much bigger space as Stadium kind of went through here. But we cut this in half. So when we did that, what we did was we said, we've got to increase our parking on campus. So what we did was, those of you who have been around a while, remember the old public safety radio station on Richardson Drive? We tore all that down. Casa Bonita had fallen apart, and some of the other buildings that we had in that area had all fallen apart. So we tore those all down and and built the big McDaniel parking space, which actually has 131 spaces. That's, that parking lot used to be about right here. My hands are a little wobbly, but right in here, and it had 25 parking spaces in it. So we increased it considerably. And one of the reasons that we did that was because we had been receiving complaints about all the parking in this area. So it was an initiative to try to increase parking here so that we would get our students from parking over here.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Remind me real quick what the first number was when you reduced the parking-
Right here in this little one.
How much parking did you lose there?
We had about 180 spaces right here.
Okay.
And this lot now has, let me double check. Now has 91 spaces. So this went from, probably cut in half.
And the other one increased from 20 to 131?
This one down here increased from 25 parking spaces to 131. Okay? Then we added this parking lot. Those of you might remember, this used to be the old football practice field up here. So we added this north lacrosse soccer parking on Stadium. It has 140 spaces. There were no parking spaces up here at all. We did no changes to the plucky parking spaces. Those have all stayed the same. And then we also added, where is it? This little tiny lot right here. We did a land swap with the Trinity Lutheran Church. We gave them some space right back here. They gave us this space that used to be their playground, and we turned that into 46 parking spaces. It's a dirt lot. I'm sure you've seen it as you've driven by. It's ugly. We have to redo it every year. The potholes are crazy, but it is, it is 40, 46 spaces. We also added parking at our library. This used to be a big field, like a lawn field, and we added parking in our library. We added 121 spaces there. So we've done, I think, our part in trying to increase parking across campus so that we could try to solve a little bit of this problem. The major one was this McDaniel lot, so that it did help get students out of this doggone lot. What we did do was we created a commuter parking decal. None of our students pay for a decal. Our faculty and staff do, but our students do not. They're charged a security fee, and that security fee includes a free parking decal. So they go into the police department, sorry, my cold has me, and and give them their insurance and registration, and they get a free decal. And they're assigned a decal whether they're a commuter student or a residential student. So they are assigned to parking spaces. The McDaniel lot is, which is this one across the street, is commuter and faculty and staff. It is not a residential. This one up here is residential only, and the goal is just try to get students to park in the residential areas and not drive over from Coronado and Geraldo into McDaniel, which is the real problem that we have. We have a parking problem, but the real problem we have is a lazy problem. People don't want to walk, and and as cold as it's been, I get it, but still, that's the, that was the principle. Okay? The other, I'm sorry.
So you'd say that overall, parking at Adam State's increased quite a bit?
It has. It has. And I, and I will not, we have taken some of our lots, like we had a huge parking space right here in front of the football stadium. We did cut it in half. You used to be able to park on both sides of Monterey. It was a one-way at one point, and you could park on both sides. And having taken away that that side, now both sides, I think at one point I had counted that we could park 30-some cars, 32 cars along this this route on Monterey, when I was just driving down, when it was pretty full. The other points that I wanted to make really quickly were that Sierra has 22 homes on it, and according to the county assessor's website, seven, possibly eight, I wasn't sure on one of them, are rentals. On Monterey, there are 12 homes. Six of those homes are rentals, and two of them are owned by Adam State. So two-thirds of those homes are rentals, because we rent ours as well. The other piece that I wanted to mention was that every single home, every single home on both Monterey and Sierra have a private driveway, every single one of them. I drove by and double-checked and triple-checked. But they all have a private driveway, which actually, which I guess actually allows them the opportunity to to park in their driveway. Cynthia Tanaka, who worked with me very closely, never complained about not being able to park in her driveway, but she absolutely did complain about not being able to get out. And and that was a problem, where we had students and faculty, staff, whoever, were parking in driveways. We immediately called the police, including our police department, and they would help assist in getting those those cars removed quickly. Free decals to all of our students, I mentioned that. The other thing I do do on campuses, I, I'm the advisor for our student government. We call it Associated Students and Faculty. And at every single meeting we meet, every other Monday, and at some of the meetings last semester, student concerns came up. We do a section called Student Concerns on our agenda, and several students asked the question and posed the, posed the question about parking every time. Why is there not enough parking? And then the issue came up about Monterey. I did explain where we were with that and why that was now restricted. But the issue does come up where students had asked, well, we're, are we not citizens of this, you know, of this community? We pay, we pay fees, we pay taxes. Why can't we park on a public street? So the issue has come up occasionally. I'm not going to say numerous. It has come up twice on our agendas in student government. I just wanted to check to make sure I hit my list. Other than that, I think those were the comments that I wanted to at least to share with you. Thank you.
We're going to ask Larry to share a little bit more about athletics and how they're impacting the campus on the north end.
Thank you, revered Mayor Coleman and esteemed city council members. Thanks for the opportunity to to be here tonight. First, I want to thank this body for our collaborative efforts between the city council and Adam State University, in particular, Adam State Athletics. One of the fruits of our labors, and they're too numerous to mention, but you may have remembered, we've won a national championship in cross country. And Michael Cotter, who is a father from Ireland of Stephanie Cotter, who is a three-time national champion in only three semesters, and she's going to put Alamosa and Adam State on the map here, I think, before she's done. But he sent me a letter, and I asked if I could forward that on. Some of you may have read that, but I just wanted to just kind of see the fruits of our collaborative efforts that we have. Dear Larry, I hope this email finds you well. I wish to say a few words by thanking Adam State University, the good citizens of Alamosa, and of course, me personally, but that's separate, for all the support and nurturing given to Stephanie Cotter, Elise, and Rochenee Flanagan since the day they began their academic and athletic quest. These three young women have grown and matured in confidence and ability in so many ways from the first, first touchdown in the beautiful San Luis Valley. I won't read it all. It's exciting, and I'm passionate when I say that all of you up there in Alamosa, Colorado, have made a huge and positive impact in not only Ireland, but 37 other nations in Europe that when they, when they spoke, and I don't know if you saw the media on that, they didn't just say me, but it was about Adam State and the good citizens of Alamosa. So there's, those are just the fruits of our collaborative effort. Second, one of your old members here, a few years ago, Dr. Hensley, we did an economic impact study that showed that athletics brings in $13.5 million to the community each year, largely because of all the events that we have. We have over 120 different events, and most of those the parking can accommodate, but you have your All-State Games, you have your district basketball tournament, which I'm sure counts, is huge, that we cannot accommodate all that parking. We are going to host this year the Outdoor Armec Track Championships in conjunction with our baseball teams and softball teams and and lacrosse teams playing at the same time. And next year, we're proud to announce that we're going to host a super-regional wrestling tournament, which we only host about once every 15 years. And at that same time, we have basketball tournaments and basketball games going on here. My concern with this is that parking, as you know, is overflowing. And as we bring these people into the community, two messages I do not want to send. One is you're not welcome here, not here, not here, not here. And the second one, is there a separation between the city and the university with all the signs and parking there, which we know is not true, but I am concerned about that. And I don't want to send the message and get around that, hey, you can't find parking there, so let's not attend these events when you get people from the valley coming in for the district basketball tournament graduation. And I don't want them to leave with a ticket or a message that they're not welcome here. Lastly, I want to take off my administrator hat and put on my citizen hat. I lived on El Rio for 18 years. Like Councilman V. Hill, I chose to live next to Adam State University. It was a choice I made, knowing full well that there are going to be runners coming across my house at 6 o'clock in the morning, that there are going to be students driving down the street, which El Rio for a time was the busiest street for people to drive down, and knowing full well that there are going to be people parking on the city street in front of my house. I I made that choice. But I'm also very appreciative of the fact that when I did sell my house, I knew the property value because of the river there and the university there, that I was able to sell at a higher rate than I would have. So I did make that choice, and as did, as did everyone there in that community, knowing this university. Now, if there's someone who moved there before the university did, I think we should grandfather them in. But other than that, you know, those are the choices that we make knowing there. And there are some cons and there are some pros, but we make that conscious choice when we do there. And we, as you know, we try to be good citizens with everybody in our community. But I do appreciate the relationship we have- appreciate the relationship we have with that, and I do want to send positive messages for those visitors that are coming into our community, which is why I'm asking that you do not, not only do not extend this. Having lived on El Rio, I know your next move will be the El Rio citizens to come and say, "Move that." And before you know it, we have a demilitarized zone that just is not very positive. So I do appreciate that and hope that you also look at resending Monterey as well.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay. So we still have a public hearing, and we still have several people who have comments. So we're still welcoming comments from the audience in regards to this public hearing?
Good evening. I'm Sam Estes, resident of Sierra, eighty-six Sierra Avenue. And having enacted the permit parking on Monterey, we have felt a lot of pushback onto Sierra. You know, as far as you get speeding complaints, we get trash complaints. I live there on the corner, and we get people parking there from, you know, Sedexo students. Sometimes they leave their vehicles parked there abandoned for several days because they know they can park there, and so it's close, and they don't have to walk very far. We have elderly that live close to us, and it affects them greatly. And I do understand and I support Adam State completely. However, they don't feel the impact we feel. You know, it's a big issue for us. And so, you know, we only want what's fair. I mean, you guys incorporated Monterey, so I think in turn that, you know, we feel we want the same thing. We've got the majority of the signatures from the residents there, and I feel, you know, it's doing the right thing for the residents on Sierra and El Sol. So, you know, for me, it's not so much the parking, because you're exactly right. There is parking there that you can park, but if you have multiple vehicles, you can only park one vehicle in the driveway. So it poses a problem for some. And, you know, I go out, I don't know, probably within a week, three times a week, to pick up trash that's just dumped in the gutter, stems from beer bottles, beer cans, McDonald's wrappers, pizza boxes, you name it. And I don't complain, I don't call it in. I just pick it up, because I know if I call it in, it's not going to go anywhere. You know, I've spoken to most of the residents and my neighbors in that neighborhood, and they feel the same way. There was only, I think, three that were neutral, and the rest were all pro for the permit parking. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Duarte, eighty-six Sierra Avenue. If you'd indulge me for ten seconds, Larry Morensen, who just recently mentioned that he's going to be retiring, I think it's super important to recognize this gentleman for what he's not only done at Adam State University, but he's also been part of multiple school districts within the valley. He was my baseball coach. I can tell you stuff. But I think it's important to recognize his commitment to our community for what he's done for us. I think the most important thing as a citizen and resident on Sierra, I want to point out that this is not a referendum against Adam State University. It's not only am I still paying for my daughter, who just recently graduated, you know, so that's still going on. The house that we live in, me and my wife, was built by her grandfather, who was not only a professor for over twenty years. He was also the mayor of Alamosa for a term, I believe. And so my father-in-law retired from there after twenty years. So Adam State is definitely a part of us, and we continue to support it and will always support it. And so this isn't about Adam State doing bad things. We all want it to be successful. I think that's super important, is we want it to be successful. I mean, we're ultimately probably talking about forty to fifty parking spots on a given day that really is impacting those members that live on that street. And when you talk about, I guess one thing that's important is, I actually lived on Monterey for about five, six years, the corner of First and Monterey. I think parking's an issue. You've got to live right in that corner, and you can figure out really quickly how bad that is, that little greenhouse. They haven't painted it since I moved. And now we've lived for twenty-six years or so in the house that we currently live on in Sierra. So I understand how parking has changed along that whole area, and we've chose to live there. There was definitely no doubt about that. I think Adam State has done an adequate, they have done a job to increase their parking, but I think if we found out what the net increase in those parking spots, it probably doesn't touch what the increase of students is at the university, which has continued to increase, and that's what we want. We want to see that, to continue to grow. I think it's awesome when we try and get all the different organizations to utilize the campus. As a volunteer coach on the baseball team, I've tried to get time at the campus. It's tough. They're busy. I mean, they gave us some opportunities, and it's, you know, before six o'clock and after nine o'clock, because there's so many things going on. And that's great. That's what we want to see happening. But I think the thing that's important from the folks around our neighborhood, the vehicles that get left for multiple days, I mean, that's an issue. Do I think it's staff? No. I hope not. I hope staff's not staying day after day, working there and doing that, because that's one of the biggest issues, is those kinds of things. I'm not big about calling the police department to go manage those kinds of things. They have a lot more important things that they need to do, and we suffer through that. Being able to park in your driveway, absolutely, if you have a single car. With the teenage driver, my wife's car, my car, my work vehicle, that's just not an option. I mean, we can get one on there. So there's just a lot of, you know, private vehicles in that area. So the trash, the extended parking, is the issue. Do I feel that the people that get the raw deal in this are the employees of the university? I feel, one, since they pay for parking, having to pay for parking is kind of an incentive for them not to ever park in Adam State parking. If they have to pay for that, it's unfortunate. I think that's not fair to them. The students, they're already paying for it. Most of those students show up late, and so they're looking for a place to park, and they find a spot. If it works for the size of their vehicle or not is always the debatable part, because they will sometimes block those driveways. And so I guess the biggest thing for me is that we need to do something to be proactive. And I would request the council, the university, that we find a way to make it so it's feasible. I think we want to have event parking for people to come. I mean, the All-State Games, if there's a family parking on my street, or there's a family parking for graduation, they're there for a few hours. That's great. Let them do that. I think we want to do everything we can. We don't want to tell people, "Don't park here at this time." But it's those day-to-day, you know, things that are just a problem that we're really concerned about. And so appreciate the time and looking into this. I think it's important, as a resident there, as do many of the others who didn't come tonight. People are very interesting. They sign a petition, and they feel that that's their voice, and they didn't feel like they needed to come speak. But I thought it was important, not only for you to hear that, but for the university to hear why we're doing what we're doing. So appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The public hearing is still open?
Boy, I wasn't even going to talk about this tonight. You've heard that before, haven't you? And I'm really torn, and I don't live on Sierra, so I can't speak for that. But listening to the guys from Adam State, I have to wonder, where does it start and where does it end? You know, and don't put this in the paper, don't you listen to this, but my neighbors across the street from my store, we usually have a parking incidence every year, and to the tune of, I was threatened that I would be shot if I ever stepped foot on the property again. And I did do a police report. So now, if I don't want them to park in front of my store, and they don't want my customers to park in front of their house, can we have a painted line? I think of the homeless shelter and my friends and neighbors up there, and if you have thirty to forty extra people in front of one shelter, are we going to paint lines there because those people likewise can't get in their driveways? I think of Society Hall. You know, we bring people from all over the valley and way beyond to our concerts and shows, and it would be awful if we had lines there and they couldn't park for a show, and you know, that hurts all of us. So I have really mixed feelings, but we can't hold Adam State back from holding events. And I guess I do like that people have their own driveways. People who bought rentals in those areas bought them to rent to Adam State people, you know? They didn't buy them to rent just to anybody. They're looking at that Adam State market. I know what it's like with two and three vehicles, because when we park in front of my store, we park one in front of the gas station and one in front of Alta Fuel, so I don't take up my own parking spots. So it's a tough call, but where's it going to end? The hospital? Does the hospital need more parking? Are people going to complain if everyone needs to go to the doctor's office, or they just bought a lot, what, the Century Twenty-One Real Estate office, so let's complain because they're taking up too much parking? So it's a fine line, and I just think you've got to put it back in the box. And I like what was said about lazy. We have created a lazy society, and it's, I guess, when I see people parking in a handicap spot, because they're just going to be one minute. They're going to be one minute running in for a gallon of milk, and then they run into their neighbor and their friend, and they're talking like me and stuff, but maybe they need to walk a little bit more. So I would probably say, open it up, and for the driveways, extend the yellow markings, you know, and so they can't park in front of the driveways. And enforce the law if those orange spots are parked in where they can't get out of their driveways.
All right. We still have a public hearing. Anyone in the audience, feel free to come up and speak.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this public hearing, I have personally spoken with several of the residents within Sierra Avenue, where this extension will have an immediate impact. Comments regarding parking being limited on Monterey Avenue have been both positive and negative, also neutral with no interest either way from some parties. The positives are from the residents who live on Monterey, because they now have parking spaces at their homes and do not have to walk a great distance after work. The negatives were from nearby residents on Sierra Avenue and El Sol Avenue, being that their parking is no longer available due to students being parked there all day and sometimes overnight. I have also received a complaint regarding trash being carelessly left behind, possibly from ASU students, we cannot prove that, who are parking on El Sol Avenue and students parking within private driveway access, blocking these driveways. The city police department has been proactively enforcing the permit parking on Monterey Avenue and partially on El Sol Avenue. APD enforces the parking permits during daily patrols, and have noticed most violations occur during special events such as football games, graduations, and other campus activities. Parking complaints have decreased on Monterey Avenue during daytime hours since implementing the permit parking, which is a good thing. The students have become more compliant to the rules on Monterey Avenue, however, the parking issues have resurfaced on neighboring streets. After speaking with the nearby residents, I agree that to minimize the complaints police receive, and we do receive quite a few, we should continue to have both day and night permits, which need to be extended to the nearby streets. I do not believe it would be in the best interest to put a timeframe on this parking permit, due to these are being monitored specifically by our community service officers, and they do not work the evening shift. The call volume for the patrol division has gone up, which has had an impact on being proactive with parking violations. That's why we have the community service officers doing this specifically. If the city manages to expand the parking permits to nearby streets, I believe it would be most effective by having this without a timeframe, so we can continue to enforce these violations with our community service officers. It'll stretch our resources a little beyond what we can do right now. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. We're going to still open it up for a public hearing. If not, we're going to see if there are any questions. Anyone else would like to make any comments? And then Chief, we'll have you back up here in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Aaron Miltberger, I no longer work for Adam State, but I did for ten years in the Student Union Building. I think when I transitioned to Boys and Girls Club, which was almost two years ago, the process had started to privatize that parking, and I heard a lot from students that I had worked with about the impact that it had on them. We have a lot of students that are non-traditional, not living on campus, who are from Alamosa and the surrounding community, who regularly commute to campus and rely on parking in that area for a lot of the studying and business and work that they do, including ASNF, where Ken and I were both advisors for the student government. Their offices is in the Student Union Building, and I know that they were really negatively impacted. In fact, I just got my haircut at College Cut and Colors, Colors, College Colors and Cuts with Barb two days ago, and there wasn't any parking in the public lot. There wasn't anywhere for me to park on Monterey. I had to park a couple blocks over. Took me a little extra time to go and walking and get my haircut, which wasn't a big deal, but for other customers of that business, I think they're pretty severely impacted as well. So I think the first decision to make parking private along Monterey, I think it was a bad decision. I think it negatively impacted the students and other folks who regularly come to the Student Union Building to do business and for other reasons. I heard a lot from them after that decision was made. I think choosing to extend that is just kicking the can more and more. It's just going to cause more problems. I don't think you can regulate your way out of this problem. I think it has to be conversations with the folks who are living in the community. I know that the student activities folks, the GAB folks, and student government would go out into the neighborhood from time to time, probably not enough, but we would pick up trash from the neighborhood, not trash that we had thrown out, but because we felt like we needed to be good neighbors. And I think that's more along the lines of the answer than to put more regulation. I also have a question about the privatization of public goods, you know? Seems to me a public street is a public thing, and to give somebody a private permit to park their private cars on a public street is a real question for me. But those are, I think, the two important things to consider, the kicking the can and the negative impact to the people who do business in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're still open for public hearing. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to voice any of their concerns? If so, please come up to the podium.
Can I just add a couple of things?
Yes.
I guess my question would be, what are you going to do with Trinidad State Junior College? Because obviously, there's parking all over that neighborhood. And when we talk trash, I have trash all over in front of my business, too, from things. So you can't say who's doing the trash. It does piss you off, and I deal with it daily. Daily, absolutely daily.
Okay. Thank you, Ruth. Okay. One more time, if we don't have anyone else who would like to make any comments, at this time, I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Chief, be on standby, because I'm quite sure there's going to be some questions for you. So Heather, did you want to follow up on any of that before I bring it back to council?
I just wanted to offer a few thoughts, and it's not in any way to minimize some of the comments that have been brought up or concerns, but we are not seeing these parking issues in other areas of town. And this isn't a parking issue that, when Society Hall has a concert and there's parking for that one event, these residents are dealing with it every single day around the clock. And so the magnitude of these And, and so the magnitude of these issues and why it's being treated differently than parking in other areas, there may be some parking constraints in other areas and clearly cities recognize parking is important because that's why we have parking codes and requirements. But the, the level of what's going on on these blocks is much different. And that's not to say that it should be extended or kept or anything like that. But I think you'd have to live in these homes in order to understand the significance of, of what's going on from, from a parking perspective. I think when we talk about partnerships and, and we, we talk about, you know, when people question why this is here, I think a great partnership would be having the same messaging. I can easily provide reasons why this is needed and how it's still supportive of ASU. And so I think sometimes if you have the right predisposition towards it, the messaging can be much more positive to answer sometimes when students or faculty may have some of those questions. And so when we talk about, let's have conversations or let's, let's figure some stuff out, the only thing that goes through my mind is, I think these residents have been trying to have these conversations for a lot of years and, and nothing's been happening. And the thing that is a bugger about this issue is the very point of people being lazy is the very logical point of why conversations and education and those types of things isn't gonna make a difference. The people's behavior is they're gonna park where it's free and where it's closest. And ASU has provided parking and it's, it's underutilized. So it's not a matter of ASU not providing it, it's a matter of human behavior. And I do not know of a solution that can change the human behavior that rotates out every time student bodies rotate out, that is going to then change what's going on from this parking over here. And so it makes it a bugger. And, and it's, it's not ASU's fault, it's not the staffs, it's not the, the students, it's, it's what it is. And, and from a messaging perspective, it's, ASU has provided these facilities, that's where you need to park. And, and you may have to walk a little bit more, but it's to make sure that we are allowing residents to be able to enjoy the use of their private property without it being overtaken by other things. And, and I can easily do that messaging. And, and so I think it's just a matter of, of some of what the predispositions are.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. So now we'll bring it back to council. Counselor Carson was first, and then we'll follow up with Counselor Daniel. And we'll start off with Counselor Carson.
First of all, I just wanna say-
Can you talk into the mic a little bit, Mike?
Thank you. I just wanna thank the representatives of Adam State. You guys represent Adam State well and for that, I wanna thank you. I personally don't think that event days are the issue here, and, and so I, I think that's a non-issue. We do live in a democratic society and we have a pretty clear picture here of the neighborhoods issue and, and what they're going through. And I, I think it is, it is wise to extend this. I mean, if you drive down, if you drive around Adam State on any given day, the library parking lot's usually empty. There is a lot of parking there. And again, it, it is an issue of laziness. If you go over one street to El Camino, it is a lot, it is logical that eventually that could happen there too. I'm not gonna go there, you know, officially, but if you drive down those streets, they're very narrow. They're some of the oldest streets in town. And traffic on those streets is, is hard anyway. So, you know, the increased flow is dangerous for the people that live there, for students. It does cause a nuisance on a regular basis. It's actually kinda hard to drive down those streets when there isn't traffic. So I, I really see this as us as, as council having to do, the way you're representing Adam State, you know, we have to do our job and represent the constituents and this is an issue for them. They've suffered a long time. And I think this is the logical way to address it because you aren't gonna get a change in behavior, you're not gonna get the same behavior from one year of students to the next, like, like Heather said. So this is one logical way to address it. And again, in a democratic society, if the residents of Trinidad State's neighborhood have issue, they come to the city, they petition the same way every other group of, of citizens does. We have several issues that have been, especially one that's been repealed this year by groups of citizens. So they apply it to, they, they approach it the same way these other citizens have. So I do think that we should extend this permit parking, and I just wanted to convey that. I really don't see event days as an issue and I don't see putting parking permits on these streets to help these citizens as damaging events at Adam State. My personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Daniel, and then Counselor Brawls.
And I, I appreciate that, Counselor Carson. I think since we put in the parking permit at Monterey, I've received a lot of conversations, both with people in staff positions at Adam State as well as personal people just in the community asking similar things, truthfully, to what Ms. Brown brought up and talking to people in the other, I don't even know what to call it, the extended part of where the parking pits are, permits are not currently happening. And so I feel like there's a, the challenge that we have is really how do we make it feasible for all sides of this? Because I don't think it's, it's working out with what we did on Monterey because of the shifts to Sierra. The biggest challenge that I see, truthfully, and the biggest worry I had before when we, when we talked about this for the, you know, a year ago when we put it in, was really the 24-hour parking. The students who live in Coronado or live in the residence halls and are parking 24 hours in front of other people's houses, that's a big concern for me. The other piece that was a big concern for me is the trash and the, the things that just happen when you have that kind of parking and people's driveways being blocked when they can't get out of it. I do respectfully, really, I disagree with the not having a time thing, but the way I think we solve the time problem, because we don't have the staff to do it internally, is to see if we could partner with Adam State's Police Department to do the enforcement as they patrol throughout the, throughout the community in the evenings instead of our CSOs. So if we permitted, let's say from 6:30, I don't know the right times, but 6:30 to 5:30, so the people who work on campus and the people who get there early, they could park during the day, but then permits were required at night. But we partner with Adam State's Police Department to potentially help us enforce that versus relying on what we know as our limited staff during their busy times. I don't know if that's doable, but I don't think, I, I think we need to have a win-win. And I'm not sure what the win-win would be if we do a complete permitted system or a not complete permitted system. Like, I think there's gotta be some kind of balance in between. And that's where I'm really struggling. I feel like we had a solution presented to us last year. We've had a year to look at it and to hear both sides of this issue and then how it's impacted the out, the community out past the permitted section. And I feel like we need to revisit that as a team council, truthfully, and have a different conversation about what other solutions might be because it's not fair to the residents. I think, I think that that's, that's been very clear. And I also think it impacts Adam State negatively as one of our bigger partners in the community. And we need to have that conversation and be real about it.
Okay. Chief, did you wanna make any comments to her question about ASU police before we move forward?
You're okay. About what part, Mayor?
Go ahead.
About ASU Police Department being able to help. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I could hear you. I mean, back on the, on the timeframe, I just see it being an issue with, when I say our call volume's going up, it's going up. You know, the community service officers have a lot more to deal with than just parking. You're aware of that. They are extremely busy. And if we're putting a time on this, I understand working with Adam State could be an option. But then again, I have to supervise certain aspects of, of what's actually being dealt with because I've come here several times and I keep hearing that we're not enforcing ordinances. And I'm telling you, we are. We are absolutely enforcing ordinances, just because some people may think differently. We will do the same thing when it comes to this. As far as Monterey, you know, I kinda walked into this after it was developed, but I can tell you what I've seen is more compliance. The students are actually doing what they're asked to do. And our guys and gals that work for the police department are taking it above and beyond and instead of going out there and calling a tow truck or writing a ticket immediately, we are working with Adam State. We're working with them to have them notify the student so we can save them from a $25 parking ticket or an $80 tow. So we're working on it and I think it's improved on Monterey. I think it's improved the lifestyle for the people that reside there. But then again, from what I've seen and the people I've talked to, I think it's impacting the other streets now. Everything is being pushed over. So working with the timeframe and another PD right now, maybe it is something to talk about right now. I don't know if I can give you a solid answer.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I think it was, who was next? Counselor Brawls and then Counselor Hensley.
Yeah, I think there can be some more alternatives. I have a couple of clarifying questions. Are all students, registered students at Adam State, are they given a parking permit?
Yes.
So all students have a parking permit? And how about the employees and vendor employees? Are they given a parking permit?
Not vendors.
Not vendors?
No. And employees purchase a parking permit.
The employees purchase their own permits?
So if they don't purchase a parking permit, how is it? Do you have 100% of employees who purchase their parking permits? There are employees who do not purchase a parking permit, so they will park El Sol.
What's the cost of a parking permit?
$65.
For the whole semester?
For the whole year.
For the whole year, $65. And employees have to purchase those?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's Mike.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hensley and then Counselor Vehil.
So I'm also in a situation where I'm torn. And I'm, I see, I totally see both sides. I will tell you that I lived on Alamosa, right across from Trinidad, and I dealt with this, where people parked and they would go into the driveway and I'd have a hard time getting out. So I definitely know that feeling. At the same time though, and I was, I was directly across from Trinidad and so dealt with it all the time, my concern, so I, I guess I really would love to discuss to see, is there a solution that's maybe a little bit more win-win? Because what I am concerned about is, so for example, then when, if this goes through, then the residents on Alamosa and around Trinidad might say, oh, well, we can petition as well. And then I'm gonna tell you, I work at the School of Business and so on Richardson, we all park all on, on Richardson. And so like, when I look at those houses there, they, there's always cars parked there. And along the side, I don't even know my street's there, on Third, I shouldn't know that's the street I live on. Anyway, Third Street. But anyway, all around that church and even if you go on the next street, so, and I do also have to say though, and I do think as far as event parking, without a doubt, graduation, things like that, so if we do do a restriction that there, I feel strongly that idea that there needs to be events, that if an event happens, that that allows a little more freedom because again, that idea of, that we do have visitors come in. And so when we have these major events, that that allows for that exception. So I guess where I'm at right now is I am a bit torn and I'm not sure what the solution is. But I, I feel like just doing a total ban, I am worried that it's gonna continue moving it down. And so I guess I was hopeful or hoping, is there a way that we can somewhat have a win-win or compromise? And this is probably my Pollyanna-ish part of me. But at the same time, potentially, that idea that it, it helps the people in the houses and I do get that, that they need to have some ability to park and not have people just dumping their cars there or leaving them for days on end. But at the same time, how do we make this all work? And I, I don't know if that said anything at all, but that's where I'm at at the moment.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Vehil.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Counselor, you want Charlie to go and then you, or you wanna go to Charlie? Okay, okay. Then Counselor Grego, then Counselor Carson. Okay? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, so Coach Mortensen is right. I live just south of the demilitarized zone. And I, I deal with beer bottles and pizza and hamburger wrappers and that, but I also understand that's the way it's gonna be living just a block east. So I'm, I am a block east of McDaniel Hall on Poncha. Anyway, so I deal with that stuff too, but I'm not as nearly as bad as the folks on, on Monterey and, and Sierra and that. I am concerned that if we put in another permit, it's gonna kick it more east and more, so then where are they gonna go? You know, where, where are the students gonna go? And at the same time, I don't think it's fair that someone who lives in this neighborhood has to deal with a student's car who's been parked there for, a kid, a, a student could park their car there from like a spring break to the end of the semester and nothing can happen. Well, that's not, that's not fair either. So like Ms. Hensley and Ms. Daniel, I'm also torn. I, I would ma, I would like to maybe see if that, that partnership with Adam State PD, if we could explore that. I also would appreciate if maybe we could just sit down with these gentlemen here and anybody else from Adam State and maybe our police force and their PD and let's talk about this. I did take Ms. Tanaka's words a couple of years ago and give them to you, Heather, because I think they were getting crushed there on Monterey. Absolutely. I think everybody in this room can agree to that. And we've had a year to, to see, to see what's going on. And the problem has just been pushed a, a block east, but yet, maybe Adam State can do a better job of pushing their students to park in these parking lots. But surely we could come together and, and meet and, and figure this out a little bit. So, again, I don't, like you said, I don't know if I said anything, if, if there's any solutions there, but we, maybe we should, and I, I do wanna, I do appreciate the city and Adams for helping out the Skavisi family, being the family there on, who lives on, on the dorms, so that's what I got. Oh, and I will say, I would do wanna make a comment towards Mr. Carson's about the event issues. District basketball's a month away and if you don't get a, if you're not an hour there before tip-off, you ain't getting a, a parking spot. You might have to park across the bridge to get there. But, and, but I, so event parking is a, is a factor as well. We're talking, we're talking, we're talking-
I said it was that I don't think these people petition because of Adam State's events. I think they petition because of the day-to-day things they were dealing with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grego, then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank you gentlemen for coming down and, and explaining what's going on and having, having a conversation with council. I'm born and raised here in Colorado, here in Alamosa, and the only time I left was for the military. And I came back with my GI Bill and I graduated from Adam State College. I'm starting my 37th year here as a councilperson. And as Heather says, that nobody has paid attention to those residents in that area. There hasn't been a year that has gone by that people from that area, those residents, have either called me or made comments that of the problems of parking and their trash and stuff in that area. They have dealt with it. They love Adam State. They know exactly, Chris, the picture you drew of all the people that come here, the economic development, they know that and they put up with it. But there, you know, and there's gotta be a time where we look at both sides and it shouldn't be just what brings in the big money. These residents too, they pay their taxes. They've dealt with it. They, they, just like you did, Coach, you said you bought your house there, you knew it was gonna, but they, they at least want some kind of respect, some kind of help. And I think we should be able to come up with something. When we shut down stadium, we took a beating for that. But we knew, we knew we did it for Adam State and we needed it for, for the economic development. And we even talked to the residents in that area. And they, they, they sucked it up and they said, yeah, we'll, we'll help. But there's gotta be a time and there's got, I, I can imagine coming home tired from your, from work and stuff, you can't even find a parking that, you know, to get into your own house. That's crazy. But in past history, Adam State and city council have sat down together and they've worked it out. And I think that's, you know, everybody here says that they don't have the answer today. Well, maybe we need to. Everybody has to give and take, you know, in order for this to work. And I, I, I think that if we sit down and, and work together, we should come up and help residents in that area and help Adam State and, you know, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Carson.
To address your comment about-
And then Counselor Daniel.
-that actually brought down cars in front of a parking permit. So it, it is an issue in other parts of the, of the city. I would entertain some sort of notice system between the college, between Adam State and, you know, the, the PD on event days. I don't think that's a bad idea, you know, something that would null or maybe even make it more lax parking on those days. And I don't think the residents of the neighborhood would probably hate that either, some sort of compromise. So, you know, to that effect, maybe that is something we can talk- So, you know, to that effect, maybe that is something we can talk about, you know, in addressing this. But I, I do think that to address the, the people's behavior issue, you push that parking permit enough east, they're going to park on campus. It's going to make sense for them to park in the parking lot that Adam State's provided. You know, we did quick numbers there Chris on that. You guys have increased the parking lot at Adam State quite a bit. So, the fact that the parking at Adam State has increased, you know, should, should help mitigate this. So, again, you push that far enough east, they're going to park in the, in the parking that you guys have graciously provided for them. So, I, I, I do think maybe we can entertain some sort of notice system, but I do not think that we should, that we should nix this completely. I think we should entertain moving it over to the next street.
Counselor Daniel.
Uh, thank you Mayor. There were a couple of other notes I wrote down that I forgot to talk about, I apologize. Coming to Mr. Miltonberger's point about permitting a street and, and things like that, I have seen this done in other communities. That was one of the reasons why it came up and there was like, so I do, I just want to, I say that we are not the first community to do this. Now, whether or not you agree with that should have happened in those other communities, that's a whole different issue. But I do, I do think it, it is something that I have seen. And for me, the, the timing and again, not to put, I don't want to overburden our police, I believe you guys do an excellent job and I know that that is hard. And that is why I think the partnership with the Adam State Police, if we look at the evening hours, when I talked to a few of the residents, they felt like that might be a decent compromise. Because the twenty-four hour, not all of the residents, some of the residents, the twenty-four hour students who stay there, those are my really big, those are my big concerns with the ones that stay long-term. Or that are parking overnight so they can visit, you know, friends or whatever. I think, I think families need to have access to their driveway, they need to have access to, to the parking in front of their street. And like, I sound like the person who said they walked uphill to school both ways, but I used to have to park fifteen minutes from my closest class. And, and I did that every day. I was skinnier then and younger, but it was, I, I do think there's a piece with having the students, helping them understand. One of the other things that came up from a resident as a resident idea was only to permit faculty and staff to park on those streets if we knew they were only going to be there during the day. And so, there have been different solutions proposed versus just a straight-up permitting twenty-four-seven. And so, I think, I think we need to think about that. And really, kind of, kind of check in with what we want our community to look like and how we want to balance some of the needs that we have. Because our, our, the residents who live there need to have access to the things that should be rightfully available in front of their, in front of their property and not have the trash and the concerns and the broken sprinklers and the things that, that harassment is not okay. And I think we need to recognize that as one of the bigger employers in our valley, Adam State, they're going to have different issues that come up related to their campus environment. And so, we need to be reasonable with both of those things. So, I repeated a lot of what I said before, but I did walk uphill both ways for fifteen minutes.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll say a few words now, is okay? This is a serious issue and just a reminder to Council, we do have a process in place to deal with issues like that. And the process is, when residents have concerns, they can get a petition, they can fill it out, and then they could bring the petition to Council to make a decision to see which, which direction is best for the residents as well as the community. I've talked to several people on Sierra Avenue over the past few days. So, what I decided to do was take the notes that I got from those conversations so that we can get a feel of what the people who live there are saying. I also would like to thank everyone who came to voice their concerns on both sides of the matter. And the good thing that came from our conversations from those people who live on the street is that they all started off with the saying, I don't have anything against Adam State University. I just want to be able to park near to my house, number one. So, I don't want this to become an issue between the city versus Alamosa, Adam State University and what you all do in the community. Because you all are a valued community partner and we appreciate everything that you do. So, I'm just going to start off with some of the comments that I received from the, the, the people who live on that street. And, and keep in mind, there were twenty-two houses, or twenty-two houses along Sierra Avenue. Two of the people who signed, they sign as renters. Sixteen sign as homeowners, if I'm not mistaken. Here are some of the comments that I was told. One said, there are several households on that street that have teenage drivers along with parents who drive. So, in many cases, there are households to where there are not just two cars or two vehicles, there are four and sometimes maybe five vehicles in one household. I was also told by a resident is that, I have lived here for nearly twenty years and I have tolerated people parking in the front of my home and many times almost blocking me in to where I can't get out or get in. And it's okay, yes, you say call the police and we do, but sometimes that takes time out of our days. I was also told, I'm const, I constantly deal with the inconvenience of having to walk a block during some of the cold winter days just to get to my front door. Because of people parking in front and parking up and down the street to where it's making the parking limited. Some people find themselves having to carry bags of groceries and have to make several trips back and forth to their vehicles, all because of the heavy parking on their streets. And the comment about trash, we kept hearing trash, trash come up. Well, they said that too. They said they don't think that is people, they don't think people are intentionally dumping trash in their front yards. But sometimes when some of the people open their doors, maybe some trash falls out and then the wind blows it. But it's causing additional trash that they have to find themselves constantly having to pick up. Now, Council, our residents are coming to us for help. They, they follow the process and the procedures that we have in place. And I don't feel that people should have to tolerate things that are preventable. Also received another comment from another residence, resident. And the resident said, once again, I don't have anything against the university, but I feel that the university should explore ways to identify parking for their employees and their students. For example, and this is a real case example that a person gave to me. They said, for example, during the day, there are always available parking spaces along the back rows of McDaniel parking lot. There's always parking spaces when you drive through on the parking lot near the lacrosse and soccer fields, with the exception of events, big events. And then there's always parking in the library parking lot. And their concern here was that they wanted me to find out, has Adam State done a thorough enough job to let the students know about where these parking spaces are so that they could utilize them? I heard the saying earlier, I didn't really like this part when we were talking about we have a lazy issue. I didn't, it just didn't go well with me about that. But if there are ways for us to make sure that people are utilizing the parking that is available, we should consider that. So, I usually don't take what people tell me at face value. What I usually do is, is I usually go out and I will explore what the comments are about. So, over the past couple of days, past three days actually, I decided to listen to this constituent. And I decided to drive by Adam State during different times of day. And I made a point to make sure that I was driving by on, during the times that students would be in the classrooms or when we would have the maybe potential parking issues. And to my surprise, I, and, and I can't say really to my surprise because I've seen it too. When I did drive by McDaniel's Hall during class times, I saw several open parking spaces. When I drove through the soccer field parking lot, I saw several parking spaces open. When I drove through the back part of the lacrosse field area over there, I did, and this wasn't last week when the students were, were not here. I want to make sure we're clear with that. That was the past three days. And so, I decided to drive up and down these streets that we're talking about today. And then I did see open spaces on, on the street to where we have the green markers. And then I saw a lot of cars on those other streets. So, I can say that I can see where people are parking and where they're moving to. But I think that at this point in time as Council, when we have constituents who come to us and they follow a particular process and procedures that we have in place. I don't think it's the time for us to ignore or put on the back burner issues that people been dealing with for twenty years. I applaud everything that Adam State is doing in the community, but at the same time, we have to be conscious of the citizens who are living out this situation on a daily basis as well. So, I'll turn it over to any other Council members who have any comments. Counselor Brawls?
Well, I, I think there can be some better alternatives. For, for example, I think I would like to see us allow for, you know, big event parking. And that's, that somehow ought to be put into our ordinance. The other thing is, I'd like to see Adam State give, give full-time employees and faculty parking permits in, in their parking lots. I think they need to kind of step up and help out in that area. And so, I, I just, I think just by, just restricting it is not, is not ample, is what I'm saying. I think we can have some, truth be better alternatives. And I, I guess I really would like to have a workstation with Adam State so we can talk about some of the solutions.
Counselor Carson?
So, that being said, I don't necessarily get a feeling that he's, he's wrong with everybody's feelings up here. How, how do you guys feel about that, just in the work session? So, with that being said, do we, should we, do we table this and?
So, that's, that's definitely Council's prerogative. You know, if, if someone wants to have some sort of vote tonight, someone can make a motion in a second or you can table it. The other part is if you, if you do want to have a work session, I, I need you to provide direction on, do you want that to just be a work session and we have ASU sitting around the table? Or do you want that to be a work session and we, we provide notice, it'll be a public meeting? But is it something where only ASU's going to be talking with you or is it also the residents and, and those, that type of stuff? So, just flesh that out a little bit when you're thinking about it.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we table this issue until after a work session where we have Adam State and some public input with Council, community input with Council, especially from that affected neighborhood.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess I'd like to add, so maybe you'd be willing to add to your motion, is not just that they're welcome, but that we, like you said, I'd like to make sure everybody knows about it and they're invited to it. Not just that they by chance found out. So, especially those streets involved, having them at the table or invited to the table as well as Adam State, as well as the Police Department or representatives from both police departments. And so, we'll do our, our general notice for the general public and everything, but so from a, from an invitation perspective, obviously, the part that's in blue and the part that's the Sierra Avenue that, that was proposed for tonight, did you want it extended for invitation purposes beyond that? One more block? Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear because I don't want anyone leaving here with certain expectations and then that not happening.
I, I guess it would also, I think, be helpful to, to make sure, typically at your work sessions, you do not take input from people who, who are there because it's a public meeting. And are you specifically intending to take input from these people in the neighborhood that we invite and from Adam State?
Yeah, I think we should make a special exception for this work session to allow people to make comments since I think Council needs a little more clarification.
And I guess for me, and if I could just add, I agree with what you're saying in that idea of all of us coming to the table to see, is there a meeting spot potentially? And so, that's why I really do want to hear everybody's point of view, that's why I think I'm torn a little. And that idea of, is there something, hey, we could do this here, we could do that there, and you know, all the different parties and potentially maybe coming up with something, hey, let's try this out.
Yes.
Includes, that includes PD at that work session, right?
Yes, mm-hmm, because we need to hear their.
Given.
Yep.
So, let's, let's go ahead and clarify that motion, Counselor Carson, if you don't mind, take your time.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this matter until after a work session with Council, Adam State, community input, with community input available until after that.
I, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have three A, I believe, yeah, I think we're down to three A. We got to wait till Heather comes back. Okay, it's going to be a public hearing and second reading of ordinance, ordering, audience, did I do this one? Twenty-nine, twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Oh, an ordinance prohibiting the personal growing of marijuana outdoors.
Is that you Eric?
It is, thank you Mayor and Council. As we discussed when this came before you on first reading, this is a codification of the citizen-initiated petition that was passed in the November election to, to do precisely this. And so, unless there are further questions, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, good deal. So, at this time, I will open it up for a public hearing, ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty, the second reading. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium.
I'll just say, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I know that this was passed by the voters and there's likely nothing that can be done. What I do want to say is that friends and neighbors of mine who include veterans from our military service who have PTSD and other folks that are dealing with credible issues that are managed and mitigated through the use of growing their own marijuana CBD plants. Will be very negatively impacted by having to build thousand-dollar additions or outbuildings so that they can grow marijuana. I've also spoken with a number of folks who are concerned about black mold and things like that, that will be a result, like not, not a question, it will be a result of passing this ordinance. So, I think the intention behind this was awesome. I understand that people shouldn't be impacted by smells. I also think there will be unintended consequences that will result in, in more health issues, specifically burdening those folks who can't afford to build greenhouses. So, they'll move their grows inside and then have respiratory and other long-term health complications. So, I, I know that there's likely nothing else you can do, but I wanted to make sure to voice that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Can I add something? Oh, no matter.
Okay, at this time, do we have anyone else who would like to make any comments in this public hearing? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Council and Counselor Hensley, go ahead.
I apologize. So, I think most of us up here, we chose to go a different route with this and this wasn't our choice. And obviously, this came from a petition and then put on the ballot. And so, I think you're right, is our hands are a bit tied and this isn't something we wanted to happen. And I guess the only thing I would say is encourage going forward, if somebody wants to continue to change us again, is go that route, but.
to continue to change us again, is go that route, but.
Okay, council, Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I, yes, we chose a different path, but I also want to honor the fact that the voters put this out and did the thing that they're supposed to do in a democratic process. So I do think it's something to honor, the fact that the process was used, the process passed. I personally didn't like it, but it passed, so I voted, so I did my job. So I do want to honor that. I think that this was the right, this was the right path for them to do, so I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. So anybody want to make a motion? Go ahead, Councilor Brawls.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can Mr. Brawls please say the ordinance number?
Thank you.
I'll find it here now.
Do you want me to help?
Twenty-nine, 2019.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance 29-2019, and ordinance prohibiting the personal growing of marijuana outdoors pursuant to initiated ballot question 300.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, good deal.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, up next, we have a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 30-2019. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium.
Ruthie Brown, I'm just curious, because I don't know, is this part of what was passed? Or were there a lot of complaints that the city received on odors from marijuana? I mean, does it have to be included or what's, what's the reason behind it, I guess?
Okay, so I apologize, we're going to have Eric, he had a question first and then we'll let you respond to Ms. Brown as well.
I didn't have a question, I was just getting ready to do our standard introductory thing, but if you wanted to move straight to the public hearing, that was fine with me, so.
Well, I tell you what, how about you do your introductory thing because that may clarify everything for Ms. Brown? And how about that? And then I'll open it up for a public hearing. Okay?
I'll pretend I'm not here.
Okay.
So my, my standard introductory thing, and Heather warned me not to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. This is what, I'll just reiterate a little bit of what was said when this was before you on first reading. And that is that after the no outdoor growing of marijuana ordinance passed, we had a number of quest, staff had a number of questions from various citizens about whether they could still grow hemp outdoors, which started pulling on the thread of, oh yeah, okay, well one of the problems with growing outdoors that we used to have in our marijuana ordinance that allowed it was a way to address odors that resulted from growing marijuana outdoors. And now that we've gotten rid of that ordinance, since we're now allowing it, we don't have a way to do, to do that with hemp, which has the same kind of odor. So that was sort of the, what kicked it off. And then just on a broader perspective, we don't have a, an odor nuisance ordinance at all, so we can't deal with other kinds of odors either, including harsh chemical odors. And I had just come off of a case in municipal court that was disturbing of the peace and assault case because of two neighbors getting into it over one neighbor causing offensive chemical orders to waft up into the upstairs apartment neighbor from refinishing furniture outside the window. So this ordinance is modeled on a number of ordinances that exist in other cities having to do with odors. It makes exemptions for agricultural odors, it makes exemptions for temporary odors that result from paving and tarring and things like that. And it's designed to pick up, also it requires that the order to be offensive has to be of sufficient duration, more than 30 minutes, to really cause an impact. So it tries to balance those kinds of things in a way that enables people to live with one another without excessive annoyance, but still giving freedom to live your life.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, so now we will open it up for a public hearing.
So it's, it's the same as what it was before. I mean, and maybe, maybe Kenny, maybe you can say, were there, and I'm just curious, were there a lot of complaints about people growing cannabis and the odors? Or was that just a?
You know, Ms. Brown, I'm going to reiterate so that, especially because it's 9:30 and we're getting late. Council takes public comment, but we don't engage in back and forth.
Okay, Kenny, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to make any comments? Okay, I'll turn it over to Heather and Eric.
So I just, some of the key points of what Eric talked about, he provided the history of how this came to light, but the bigger issue is if we do get a complaint related to any type of odor, we currently cannot do anything. And so that's the bigger thing, regardless if it's marijuana, hemp, or as he indicated what went through municipal court, if it's a dead carcass, we have no way of dealing with it because it doesn't exist. We don't get a lot of these types of complaints. I think might help answer that question, it's not something that we've gotten a lot of complaints on odor, period. But given the sensitivity on hemp and marijuana, it could be something that changes, I don't know. And I know it ran in the paper today, but the conversation also was the reasonable person perspective. So we may have some property owners that aren't getting along and one has a sensitivity to something, that would not meet the reasonable person standard. So police wouldn't necessarily get involved in that situation or be, their hands aren't forced to have to do citations. And so just wanted to make sure to add a little bit of that, and that might answer a little bit of your question.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay, council, I'll bring it back to you. Councilor Daniel?
I believe this is an important part of our process to have options for our police force and our things. So if there's no further discussion by council, I move that we approve ordinance number 30-2019.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay.
The motion carried six to one with Councilor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. All righty, up next on the agenda is we have committee reports. Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I went to a city school board meeting on Monday. The new school board members are getting accustomed to their new roles. They did have a pretty lengthy discussion about some graduation requirements. The state of Colorado, the Department of Education is asking now all high school students, by the time they graduate, to complete a capstone project. And this project includes any type of community service or something that really interests them as another way to help a student graduate from high school. And Alamoza is in the implementation stages of that, so that'll be really good. It helps some of those students who might drop out and that to get another pathway to graduate. They honored the volleyball team on their final four appearance. They honored their AP program, which is I guess one of the best in the state. So they're doing good things at Alamoza School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor V. Hill. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, if not, we'll have staff announcements.
I'll let Eric go first.
Okay.
Counsel, this is soon to come out in my belated quarterly communication update to you on water, but I wanted to let you know that at the end of December, we did file the city's application for approval of a plan for augmentation and change of water right. The comment period for people to file objections is the end of February, so that we'll know then by, by the end of February what the playing field is. And I fully expect we'll get objections from, from who we typically get them from with city water cases, and we'll start moving that process forward.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to do a quick shout out to our IT team. You got the email and you see your new computers, so they got all of that set up and are looking to make improvements. They've also worked with Holly's team in Public Works to get our planning commission into our Nova software, which is the software we use for your agendas. What that means from a public perspective is that the agendas and the minutes are more searchable and it's just a better way to have those documents, especially since sometimes planning commission, they make important decisions. And so I just wanted to give kudos to everyone who worked on getting that up. And we're testing it, I think, for one month and then we'll be more going live after that. So kudos to the team on that. You may have seen some conversations in the back, so I want to go ahead and read a text that went out. I received it as a parent for the school district. So the Alamoza School District officials and local law enforcement officers are currently investigating an online threat. All Alamoza School District and youth Budsmann classes are canceled for Thursday, January 16th. Updates on any scheduled events and trips will be provided later. District appreciates everyone's cooperation. So since that seemed to be a bit of a big deal, I don't want you to be surprised by that. Kenny's been in this meeting, so the information he has might still be limited and I'm not sure if he can talk publicly about anything at this time. No. So just FYI, we'll keep you guys in the loop as we're made aware of it. But since that's something that went to all parents in Alamoza School District, that's what some of the whispering was going on in the back.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, up next, we have council comments, Councilor V. Hill?
And Heather, just to confirm, retreat this Saturday?
Yes, sir, and we moved it to 9:00 AM and I think we should be done before 2:00.
Thank you for doing that.
Any more council comments? Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you.
You gotta turn it on.
Oh, well, helps if you hit the button. Okay, so I just really wanted to thank the convert, each other, each of us for the conversation today because I know it wasn't, wasn't easy. I think this was made apparent in our motion, but if the PD and ASU could explore sharing things before that work session, I think that would be helpful. I think you guys are on that, but just to say that out loud. Some of you may be interested, I know, we all up here know that I'm on the Behavioral Health Task Force, the Safety Net Committee for the state of Colorado. Well, on the 24th, there is a all task force meeting all day that is open to the public. It is in Denver, but you can zoom in, you can participate electronically and hear the conversation about what's been happening in all the task force areas. And it really is going to change the way behavioral health is looked at in our state. So if you can join or want, you know, you can see the minutes all online, there's a bunch of stuff, so it is the Behavioral Health Task Force. And yeah, I'm excited to start 2020 with you. It's January 24th.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Okay, any other council comments? I don't see any red lights on, so the first meeting of 2020 is adjourned.